Good evening, welcome to the St. Martin Parish Council meeting for August fifth, twenty twenty five. At five o'clock in the afternoon, we will be meeting room with the St. Martin Parish government in ten minutes. Please silence all cell phones and move all hats. The public can comment upon any items that are part of the vote by the St. Martin Parish council. We ask that you fill out a request to speak form located in the night of the room. Once completed, you will bring it to the Sheriff's Department who will give it to me. I would like to call the meeting to a halt with a prayer and by the council.
We, the members of the St. Martin Parish Council, have been chosen to represent the people of the parish. Beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our life will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land. And in so doing, fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord and.
The Starkey, can you lead us in the red and blue?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity and justice for all.
Will the board ever was granted?
Approval of minutes regular meeting July eighth, twenty twenty five.
I need a motion to second the group. I have a motion by Mr. Melisong, second by Mr. Louier. Call for a vote.
Persons to address the council, there is none. Special business A, council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Trina Jones, who has a single family mobile home on property zone I one light industrial located at eighteen oh three B Mills Highway, Groverish, District seven.
I need a motion to second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Melisong. Second by Mr. Louier. Call for a vote.
Dean, council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Michael Crane, who has a single family mobile home on property zone C one light commercial located at fifty one eighty eight Main Highway, St. Martinville, District three.
I need a motion to second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Norris, second by Mr. Jean Baptiste. Call for a vote.
C, council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Chad Radler, who has a single family mobile home on property zone W three Woodland, Cleveland Commercial, High Dowager and Usses. Located at twenty five ten Chappaire River Highway, Groverish, District five.
I need a motion to second, I have a motion by Chair, second by this plate. Call for a vote.
Dean, will to show cause to address nuisance property located at thirty three twenty two Main Highway, Groverish, District nine. Property owned by Joseph and Mary Ames Senior.
Mrs. Anare, you want to? Yeah.
It's it's not changed. Sorry, it's fine with the standard. I also.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
All right, um. Mr. Ames' property, uh, I'd taken photographs of the property. Uh, he did come by the office and as of the last progression photographs that I've taken, because he was sorry. He came by and he brought some of some of the pictures just recently of the uh progressions that started and there's a lot on that property that needs to take place, so it's beginning phase of it. And I'm assuming that he started at the license needed to start the process. He was unable to be here tonight, so he came by early and dropped the pictures off. So I'll be in contact with him. As progression. You know, progression continues.
Any questions, Mrs. Anare from the council?
They have the word before pictures, like on the.
Any questions from the council? No questions. Mr. Ben.
Yes, sir, um. You do do the uh the ants, the the dogs that they have, is it doesn't business dogs?
I'm uncertain of their dishes, I know that they're on the chain, so I'm I'm not determined their dishes.
How many do dogs do they have?
And they have like two dogs back there.
Who is they on the train? Yeah, but the neighbors don't know that every evening they can't sleep because of the the dog goes so far.
And that's an animal control situation.
I'm sorry.
That's an animal control situation at that point.
When people have dogs like that on the chain, are they required to carry them?
I'm uncertain. That would be animal control of the shares.
Okay, who would answer that question there?
We we can find out for that, sir, uh, not a problem. Animal control, we can uh get with uh our insurance carriers, they may be able to intervene and or just give us information. And also with the uh uh Sheriff's Department or anything over there.
With no further questions, I need a motion to second to proceed with the order of condemnation and meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Corville, second by Mr. Nelson. Call for a vote.
Dean, will to show cause to address nuisance property located at ten forty four White Federal Road, St. Martinville, District one. Property owned by Linda A. there in Cheney, Lake.
This is.
Dean, I I observed from the previous pictures that I've taken that cleanup has started and um, some of the pictures that I have, that was a trailer, they don't clean up the trailer, I want the trailer. My only question is the roof, is it just a canopy?
It is.
It's just a canopy, okay, that's. Do you have any question for the other team?
Any questions from the council?
Because they have started cleaning up that.
So remember the board. Is it boarding or can it?
Mr. Ben, what was your last comment?
About the cleanup progression? Yeah, they've they've completed a lot of the cleanup progressions already and um, that's just minimal, just a few things like this photograph right up near the trailer. There's some items that are laying there. There was a trailer full of items that was on it, uh, like a pretty large utility trailer that has been moved out. Uh, like I said, the only question was, it was about the roofing, if it was just a canopy and not the existing uh roofing of the trailer. She said it's just a canopy, it's just a.
Okay, that's it, that's all, man. So if there's no further comments or questions from the the council, uh, I guess we need to do is move, but it could be and allow this uh salary to continue to work with him to finish up the thing. So at that time, I need a motion to second to proceed with the order of condemnation and meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Louier. Second by Mr. Jean Baptiste, call for a vote. So this is an hour to continue to work with y'all to to finish the process if you have and you should be there. Thank you.
And will to show cause to address nuisance property located at the corner of Wilson, St. Louis Road and R. Batmore Road. First by ID one eight three zero two C two four four five, in District two. Property owned by Felicia Ann Hoods.
This is Miss Felicia, she's all of the the property right there. Um, the grass has been cut, uh, I was kind of swaying with her in reference to further progressions what needs to take place. And reference to the camp or the grass which is in front of the house. I I wasn't able to get that further back to see the structure of the of the house that's right there. But those items which that share share buys, that she will continue to work on to get the cutting and done within front of the house and also the destruction. That we can better make a better determination of what we live in.
Any questions from the council? If no questions from the council, I need a motion to second to proceed with the order of condemnation and a meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Jean Baptiste. Second by Mr. Alex Dennis. Call for a vote.
Dean, the council will in a public hearing regarding a request for a bid protest from Southern Tormore pursuant to a call for bids that occurred on June nineteenth, twenty twenty five on the annual two contract, the St. Martin Parish Government. And the council has been that devote on whether to approve or deny the bid protest.
I need a motion to second, don't move here. I have a motion by Mr. Clean, second by Mr. Forty. Call for a vote.
Chairman, if I may, before you uh call this man, if I can just for the audience of the council, just give a little background on this. Um, so every year the parish solicits bids for tires, distracted tires, truck tires, any built home by the parish. Um, you might find a little different because the council does not award that bid. That's because the amount does not reach the threshold. Um, actually, the tires technically do not require a bid. However, from what Mr. Shauna's showing, each tire, we have to get three proposals each time as a tire that needs to be replaced. And that's why it's a bidding process, so it is a formal bidding process. Um, and that's why it's before y'all to date, so the awards were bid. Um, if you notice on your bid tabulation, again, it looks different than the normal typical bid you'll see. It is on my line, so it's very high. So for instance, on this one, we had two bids, total tire, Southern Tire. Total Tire may have got this bid, Southern Tire may have got this certain tire. Um, so it's really important to look at the bid tabulations. On this particular one, bid right to both parties. I'm sure you saw both award letters. We're seemingly always confused when our first dollar and process. Um, so that's not administrated here with the purchasing agent. However, Southern Tire made a protest of bid, uh, and that's why it's before y'all, since it is a formal bidding process. Um, it's not vice versa by the council, but that's what the weekend in law says. Um, so with that being said, give you back to chairman.
This is Trump.
Yes. Well, we're kind of questioning is in y'all's contract, it says tires manufactured in China. Since this bid has come out and I deal with it, I take care of y'all's business there. They called me needing to order those tires, they said it competition total tire had it. I said, call me back with it. They did. Both times, the tires are manufactured in China. According to y'all's rules, no tires from China. What we're requesting is to get from total tire, their specific bids and their spec sheets. If they aren't from China, it's going against y'all's rules. That's what we're looking for right now, is to feel with that and see where we sit at right now.
I I think in the bidding process, we don't obviously see that it came to.
It said right here, current wind vector in China are not acceptable.
Right. So they they made it on the shit, that's why I think I'm not. Correct, so it is in our bidding procedures specifically tire manufactured in China are not acceptable. And that's the notice we give into any bidder who's looking to bid on the tires. Uh, so parish government, that's what y'all should expect. So I'll have some more advice after the trucking is closed. But yes, if uh Chinese stay able to bid us to be awarded and it came with a Chinese tire, it would be against our contract. And the parish could say, we don't want that tire. We need to spend, we need to conform to the bid into the contract. Uh, and if they refuse to do so, it would cost for rebidding or other alternative forward. So so but according to the bid, what you actually bid on, what you bid on. It did, but by being on a deal, read that it's not a Chinese tire, like. Correct, that's my interpretation, they submitted, they submitted their prices, they did not specify what kind of tires they did own. But they know, of course, the bidding instructions that it should not be manufactured in China. So we have to read the bid as if they comply with that, that it's not manufactured in China.
Now that we do send our spec sheet, this we had a lot of government, I can tell you that in the government business around this area. And what we did y'all was bristone, firestone products. And that is on state contract and we actually have a special account set up for St. Martin Parish Government if we get bristone, firestone to approve to get these prices. Because all the tires that I bought from, we should buy below our cost, so we have to get it back. That's when we started and girl I deal with the corporate in our government department, we started looking at this. Something's not right on these prices. And then, like I said, I got two fellows. They told me with the tires, one of us is, I looked them up, both of them are manufactured in China.
So I guess the only way, I mean, in in the bid request, it said that it hires maybe from China. So if they get on this and they try to put Chinese tires on, I think.
I got pictures, I got pictures of the tire that y'all bought and wrong when y'all struck the old Chinese tires. We're just looking to make sure it's a fair.
Mr. Corville.
In their bid, did they get exception of Chinese? I mean, I know because I didn't see we did exception to the desires. Did I mean, what was the? They call up.
What's that?
Well, I mean, I'm talking about total. No, no, they they just didn't expect the bid that came from Chinese tires. So if you did on it, you should have did on the one that it came with Chinese style, that's what we agreed to. So I guess the only way we hold them accountable for is if we put a put tires on, they put a Chinese star, then we get. If they don't know that that was a bid, or they have to put the bristone, firestone or uh.
Yes, bristone, firestone. If three men got to the bristone, firestone, this one good year.
Right.
Your major, they usually do your kind of now continental general, all of them have. The Chinese stars we can bid on, but it's not to a state contract, it's straight out bill.
Right. So Mr. Ben, what would be your suggestion on this, what would be your recommendation? So just before I give a recommendation, I want to make sure that there's no other public comments, so we'll see if uh the representative has any other comments towards the bid protest or the council or the public and moving close to public here. I'll give y'all some guidance if y'all have.
Yeah, I said, Mr. Nice, do you have a question?
Basically, the same thing you was asked, I was going to ask legal. Are we supposed to, are we legally responsible to interpret that they understood that they couldn't be?
We can just say the questions to the representative and then I'll answer those questions. I just want to make sure before I give y'all advice, we know everything the public has said.
I was saying, this is the place that up, been doing this for twenty years or so. And the lady I deal with our corporate, she called me on this and I says, let's go this way, we're going with the state contract prices, which we know is bristone, firestone and not anything Chinese. And that, and when this popped up, we both said something, something's not right. Yeah. And that, I said, I've got pictures of the tire that one of you gentlemen did have to buy and it's a Chinese tire. It's called Selima C E L I N O. And it is made in China.
And that was, we, and this is the time that we heard you say.
In the last two weeks, yes. All we're looking is what they bid, are they Chinese or not? We just want to see what they did and get their spec sheets on. If we can help y'all compare.
Apples out.
Apples, apples out, correct.
Okay, anything else to like that too, or is that's it? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions from the audience or in the office of the council? Okay, I need a motion and second to both of it here. I have a motion by Mr. Jean Baptiste, second by this plate. Call for a vote.
And if y'all, we're considering the next vote, so first you gotta consider uh, someone makes a motion to approve the bid protest. That's meaning you agree with the representative on what he said. And what would happen is we're gonna send it back to the administration to reevaluate the bids, okay? Uh, if you don't think it's a proper way to protest the bid or if it wasn't just cause to protest the bid, then it's gonna be to deny the bid protest. Uh, so the way I understand it is, as a concern if Chinese tires were bid. Uh, now, I would admit that the Southern Tire is the more, uh, they did provide a more thorough bid uh, than total tire, there was more information. However, total tire did not give us anything that says this is from a Chinese manufacturer. Um, so if if y'all decide to not approve the protest, uh, I think the bid is fine and that the law is complied with. However, I would implore the administration, tire's calm, we need to make sure, because if they tried and said Chinese tire on the vehicle and it was he's saying true in the last two weeks, we didn't call them and say, you knew you weren't supposed to bid on a Chinese manufactured tire. So we expect a non-Chinese manufacturing tire. And they have the honor of the price they bid. Um, so if anything is more lucrative to the parish, uh, to take the lowest bidder. Uh, we talked about this before, when awarding a bid, we always look for the lowest bidder, assuming it's a responsible bid. Uh, and it's an initial duty of the parish or any governing entity to award the lowest bid. And that's what we did, we awarded the lowest bid, um, pursuant that there's not gonna be a Chinese manufacturer. If total tire given evidence that these were Chinese manufactured tires, I would agree with this protest that it be proper. Uh, but what was presented tonight, uh, and y'all have everything that the purchasing agent considered when he considered how to award the bid. Uh, our recommendation is to deny the bid protest.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corville, can we, can we deny the bid protest and then still go back and make sure that? I guess what I'm saying, I, we don't want to kill, we definitely want to make sure that total tire honoring what they committed to in the bid. I'm sure if I tell, uh, Mr. Trump, he could bid Chinese tires and bid a lot cheaper, too, you know what I'm saying, that's not really fair, can?
Yeah, that's right, and I don't think there's nothing stopping the parish from from asking them for a spec sheet. But again, even if we don't ask for a spec sheet and they try to give us a Chinese manufactured tire, we're standing to back. And at that point, if they can honor the bid and give us a non-manufactured Chinese tire, uh, that's us to terminate the contract and we did the project. So but just because the project was bid and all those limitations are over, they were obligated to accept the lowest bid. And now it's their burden to comply with the contract they made with St. Martin Parish Government, being total tire.
I guess that's the question I'm asking, if we vote no to contesting the bid tonight, it doesn't handcuff us to not be able to go back to bid if we indeed find out that total tires are not compliant.
That's correct, if total tire says, well, we did go Chinese tires and we're not gonna eat the cost on what difference might be, we're not gonna do business with them. Okay, uh, and Dean John did kind of talk in the midst of this process, they vowed to clarify the bid process, move it forward with these. They're just a little less formal, uh, because we don't have an architect or an engineer kind of running it. Maybe we need to look, move it forward to spec, we want specified what tires were bid. Uh, just for next year to kind of make sure and move it forward to maybe take the question out.
So even though we, if we decide it's accepted like it is, we still, administration can still go back and look and make sure those tires is questioning. And if they are, then we need to take action against it, make a change of tires output, the tires are supposed to. And if they can honor the contract, then we could, we can revoke their bid, right?
Terminate and then.
So we'd have to go back out to re-dead, we wouldn't take the next lowest.
Correct, it would be a new bidding process. And look, in the in the midst of the bidding process, if we need a tire, well, then it's the request or proposals, info in the meantime, if the others there. So wait out and find limitations.
So we not, we not, when we're making this decision tonight, we're not deciding on if they put Chinese tire in a truck. I just want to get that straight. Right now, what we doing is we voting to see if this thing was done right, if it was done within the bid on everything was was legit, which it works. So that's why we do, I think, I need a motion to go with the recommendation of coun- of council. So I'd add for a motion in accepting.
Denying.
Denying. So we need a motion to deny the bid. Uh, protest.
And just to clarify, I'm really. So.
No, I'm just clearing this up, make sure they don't do, you know, reform.
Before you just so, to deny the bid protest, it's so have the bid awarded like it's already been awarded. To approve the bid protest, says hold up, we're not gonna award the bid, we're gonna give it back to the purchasing agent to to make sure it's done right. Uh, y'all not gonna make the decision on how to actually afford it. Uh, if we go back to administration, do we need to reject, were they not responsible, were they responsive? So just make sure, y'all have questions about the difference, it is a new topic we haven't had, or at least it's open here.
I've never seen this before, you. Uh, Mr. Nelson. I guess what I'm trying to wrap my brain around is if Southern Tire and we be, if total tire was given the requirements to bid and they see tires made right, white and white tires manufactured in China are not acceptable. And they still bid Chinese tires without making note of it. I, this, my opinion, there's something wrong with that, because if you do not follow in the guidelines that was set forth for people to get on these tires, again, just my opinion, and that's not good, because basically it's almost, I don't know, they could see that way, but there's no way to put it. It almost seemed like if they were trying to put a fast one on us and slide Chinese tires in there, where everybody's playing a lot of rules and doing American made tires.
So, and let me, let me specify something too, so when you consider, if you're gonna vote a Cooper or not, you need to live ahead, both of that's forward to be. And what the bids came back in the bid tabulation, can you ascertain from that if Chinese tires were bid on or not?
Nobody says tires manufactured in China are not acceptable. And they still did. I know they didn't tell, they didn't tell us, right, but they did.
So and so, and I understand we have Mr. Nelson and I re-read you. The only thing is, so that, so now you're here to vote to see if the bid process was done right, which we we determined that it had. So basically, what's gonna happen is the administration will have to get the information that was provided to check those tires, make sure and see if they were Chinese tires. If they were, then they bid violation, then they either did it right or we can revoke their bid.
Okay, in one, in one closing statement, if we are determining that this bid process was done right, then my opinion, it wasn't, because we ended up in Chinese cars. When it specifically says tires manufactured in China are not acceptable. Again, just my thoughts only, but my opinion, it wasn't done right because of that, so.
Right, okay. Is that evident?
Yes, sir, uh, Chair, could you explain something to make it clear, because I'm still a little confused on the last sentence. And when, to the end, it says to approve or deny the bid protest, we gotta go twice.
No, so we either gonna make the motion to approve it, or we're gonna make the motion to deny. So whoever makes the motion has to, has to make a, you ain't gonna make the motion to deny, or we should approve, that's what we're gonna do.
So it's, so it's, so it's gonna be one, one?
One motion, only one.
So, and, and just, just to clarify, we gave you the council thing, there's questions, it's still, like, does everyone say it seriously? You look at the bid tabulation, and I'm thinking the tire is easy, it's on a Coca-Cola. Uh, eleven R twenty-four dot five claim, Southern Tire's bid was three hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. Total Tire's was two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Well, total, if reading that, can you ascertain if those are Chinese tires or not? So that's what you gotta think about. Two, even if, even if Total Tire did a Chinese tire, well, Parish Government now has them locked in to the tire we asked for, two eighty-nine. Uh, so honestly, it's more beneficial to the parish if they did Chinese tires, because we don't know that today, but we can also hold them to the passing of the bid. Uh, so again, it's, it's a weird tabulation, but you gotta consider, if you could ascertain from these tires, if they were made from a Chinese manufacturer. Uh, we didn't specify, tell us what type of tires we're sending. Uh, against Southern Tire did have a much more thorough bid, uh, the Total Tire complied with what we asked for.
So when the next time we vote on a bid, something, this is something that we can maybe take it from a lesson experience, or where we could, I suppose, but certain brands of tires. Mr. Hubier.
I was just wondering, um, it seems like we haven't made the decision right away, which I found, but only we had one time to do this, or this is just a special day, or?
Man, I'm in here for ten years, and this is the first time that you ever came to front of me, ah, no, we're not, we don't have this issue before. Uh, so I guess it, it's just, I, I, we not, so, just, just so we don't bear off of what we hear, what we, we joined tonight, because I understand what you're saying, that clearly we could have bought any tire, but Mr. Hubier bring up a good point. So they need two million dollars on that tire. But they're gonna have to put us in an American-made tire for two million dollars. So we event them with, with you no matter what. Now, if they can stand by, and they can honor that, that the, then we have a reason to revoke their bid. But as of now, we just under assumption, the way that the bid went out, and the way it was explained in the bid form, is that it has, it came in Chinese tire. So we just gotta think for granted that he started the bid, we're not Chinese tire. So we, we, and the incident that, this trouble brings up, that they gave you Chinese tire, they were brand a tire, that's gonna have to be done through administration, investigation, and they have to, you know, follow and come back and report to us, or take action, what they're gonna have to do, that would be done through administration, that agree with us.
Mr. Correa. I'm good, I kind of agree, I, I kind of like the direction Mr. Hubier was downing. Let's take a little more time to investigate, but you're right, all we're saying, my feeling this did is, no, the bid was that direction.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that when we get that, it didn't close the door to going and, no, and, and make sure we did this thing right, so, okay. So that, that's what the movement we want to, to deny, the bid was denied, I agree with you. I'm good, I think. Ms. Norrisi?
Good question, these, these type of contracts, do they have a, a timeframe of termination, is it immediate? Termina, if they can't meet the needs, if something is discovered, they can't, is it immediate, is it a time period?
Well, if you're hitting on the spot, I don't like to answer those questions, but in, in bid law, we would look to the bid law to say, if, if, if they can't comply, apply their obligations themselves during the bid, Parish Government's not gonna do business with it, we have costs to get out. Uh, it, it's probably very innocent, far worker, not administration, take their vehicle, get tires, and not question it. Uh, but that's maybe just something that needs to be tackled at your hand, where the truck goes in the shop, wherever it may be, um, hey, what tires you putting on? Make sure it's not a Chinese manufacturer. We specify Chinese, I'm from Korea, they can file with the bid, so it may not just be American-made. Uh, so it's, it's a little more onerous, I think we can clarify this moving forward, have those discussions with Sean and get hold on the bid department. Uh, just kind of make it better moving forward.
Sean, you know, I mean?
Yeah, it does say within the, uh, call for bids, that we have the right to make the contract within forty-eight dollars of written notice.
Okay.
So at any point that we find, I think they, they're not a good standing group, so you can terminate it. And one question.
Mr. Hubier, let me ask a question. With the environment, the world environment of manufacturing and so forth, uh, as in, you have things coming out of Mexico that may have an origination of somewhere else, is that, uh, is that stamp of origin Mexico? Or is it stamp of origin, um, possibly another country, or possibly, is that, is that play any, any light on this possibly? Where are those, where's the origin, is it where the home base of the company is, where the tires are being manufactured? There may be a question, a valid, a valid, uh, nature of origin that could be brought up into this, that I don't know if we'll, you know, stick in spoke, but you know, with the, the world concept of, of, of manufacturing today, it may be a little bit more complex than, than, than the other people.
So we want to look at the, uh, the requests, the invitation for bidding, right? And the invitation for bidding has one sentence that says, uh, let me read it, so it's verbatim on the record. Uh, tires manufactured in China are not acceptable, so we're gonna look at where the tires were made, where's the plant, uh, where are they actually processed at?
Good.
Alright, are there questions, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Ms. Norrisi, Ms. Norrisi, is your motion to deny or accept?
My motion is to deny, and I'm explaining because the record is illegal, my motion is to deny the bid protest, is to go forward, do what we have, and let it play out.
So I have a motion by Ms. Norrisi to deny the bid proposal. I have a second one, did you want to raise?
Deny the bid proposal or the?
But the great bid proposal. I have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Orders is introduced.
For volunteering.
I need a motion and a second to both of you here. I have a motion by Ms. Plie, second by Ms. Correa. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero two O R, in order introducing the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on the portion of Ringland Road from Dogma Son Road to the bridge located in District Five.
Is there anyone here who wants to, to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero two O R, in order introducing the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Roosevelt Ground Road located in District Seven.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero three O R, in order setting the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on Petroleum Parkway Extension located in District Two.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero four O R, in order setting the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on Lavid Road located in District Two.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero five O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on South Chuck Drive located in District Three.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side? Ms. Norrisi?
Yes. And I would just like to give a, a little brief explanation, because some people have called, and reason of reducing it, and this is in District Three, which I represent, because there was just a lot of calls, we made, uh, high traffic, speeding, and it's, it's an area of where kids play, and there's just a lot of kids in that area, so that's why, for the safety, that's why we're making a proposal to reduce the speed limit.
Thank you, Ms. Norrisi.
Thank you.
Summary number one five zero six O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on Nublo Anthony Road located in District Three.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero seven O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on Bellter Drive located in District Three.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero eight O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty-seven feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash thirty-six A dash two A dash five, where it borders parcel number zero four one zero one B two two three eight.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five zero nine O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty-five feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash thirty-six A dash two A dash five, where it borders parcel number zero four one zero one B one four one eight lot two thirty-one.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five one zero O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash twenty N dash one A dash one, where it borders parcel number one eight five zero 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 one six five zero.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five one one O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to fifty feet on the northwestern side of the drainage channel designated as M dash forty-eight, where it borders parcel number zero nine two zero two C two five five three.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side?
Summary number one five one two O R, in order allowing Parish President Pete Delco to enter into a right-of-way use agreement with Optimum that allows Optimum to operate in the public rights way, in favor of and in possession of St. Martin Parish Government for the purpose of providing telecommunications services and other services in St. Martin Parish along with other matters pertaining thereto.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this side? I need a motion and a second to both of you here. I have a motion by Ms. Batey, second by Mr. Hubier. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero one O R, in order introducing the, reducing the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on the portion of Zenzing Road from Dogma Son Road to the bridge located in District Five.
I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Chair, second by Mr. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero two O R, in order setting the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Roosevelt Ground Road located in District Seven.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Ms. Norrisi, second by Ms. Correa. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero three O R, in order setting the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on Petroleum Parkway Extension located in District Two.
I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by the Chair. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero four O R, in order setting the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour on Lavid Road located in District Two.
I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by Ms. Norrisi. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero five O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on South Chuck Drive located in District Three.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Ms. Norrisi, second by Mr. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero six O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on Nublo Anthony Road located in District Three.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Mr. Correa, second by Mr. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero seven O R, in order introducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on Bellter Drive located in District Three.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Ms. Norrisi, second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero eight O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty-seven feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash thirty-six A dash two A dash five, where it borders parcel number zero four one zero one E two two three eight.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Mr. Correa, second by Mr. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five zero nine O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty-five feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash thirty-six A dash two A dash five, where it borders parcel number zero four one zero one B one four one eight lot two thirty-one.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Mr. Correa, second by Ms. Plie. Call for the vote. Ms. Norrisi.
Summary number one five one zero O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to twenty feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L dash twenty N dash one A dash one, where it borders parcel number one eight five zero 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 one six five zero.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Mr. Hubier, second by Mr. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five one one O R, in order introducing the extended service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from one hundred feet to fifty feet on the northwestern side of the drainage channel designated as M dash forty-eight, where it borders parcel number zero nine two zero two C two five five three.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Mr. Melison, second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number one five one two O R, in order allowing Parish President Pete Delco to enter into a right-of-way use agreement with Optimum that allows Optimum to operate in public rights way, in favor of and in possession of St. Martin Parish Government for the purpose of providing telecommunications services and other services in St. Martin Parish along with other matters pertaining thereto.
I need a motion and a second. You failed to give the motion, second.
Resolutions? Summary number zero seven two R S, a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delco to enter into an intergovernmental agreement that will affect the government, providing for certain taxing authority for each respective parish as it relates to mandatory subdivision, and further authorizing the Parish President to sign any other documents necessary to ensure that residents in his subdivision have water service.
I need a motion and a second, I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Second by Mr. Hubier. Before we vote, Jean-Baptiste, you'd like to say something?
Yes.
Okay, at the last meeting, I had some questions in regards to water elevation and how that would all play out. I did meet with Mr. Delcum and planning and zoning and the architect that reviewed all the plans. There's a slight elevation, but nothing that would bring extra water into Riot Path, which is the area that I was concerned with, so I wanted to share with y'all that would work, I was even getting some answers in regards to my concerns in regards to bettering the place subdivision.
Thank you. So I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by, we have to, call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven three R S, a resolution awarding contract for project number fifty slash J fifty dash twenty three dash zero one of the Office of Facility Planning and Control Expansion and Renovation of Central Office Complex for the apparent low bidder Castle Road Construction in the amount of one million eight hundred ninety thousand dollars.
I need a motion in the Senate, the word G. I have a motion by Ms. Northese. Second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Asking for a re-vote. So.
Call for a re-vote. Okay, may I make a motion for a re-vote?
No.
You said so, I'll say it.
No, just say your.
Yeah.
Just to be safe, it's position.
I would, last time we did it, we should always keep it the same way. It's let's vote and allow a re-vote, a motion in the Senate and see if y'all agree. We have a motion in the Senate, the re-vote. I have a motion by Mr. Louie here. And I have a second by Ms. Northese. Call for the vote. So, then let's make, let's make sure everyone understands, so what y'all just voted on was, was, was supposed to be if they're gonna allow a re-vote. So someone didn't understand those instructions? Let's do it again, so the motion, as I recall, is a motion to re-vote. We had a motion, we had a second. So, call for the vote. Just call for the vote, and the vote's gonna be if they're gonna allow a re-vote on this agenda item, which is first created in before y'all re-vote. So the motion, in right here, is to allow a re-vote, a re-vote.
One more question, too.
Yeah. Okay, call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven three R S, a resolution awarding contract for project number fifty dash J fifty dash twenty three dash zero one of the Office of Facility Planning and Control Expansion and Renovation of Central Office Complex to the apparent low bidder Castle Road Construction in the amount of one million eight hundred ninety thousand dollars.
I need a motion, second. Zero seven B. The order number is B. I have a motion by Ms. Northese. And I have a second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven four R S, a resolution rejecting all the interest received for project number fifty dash J fifty dash twenty three dash zero one of the Office of Facility Planning and Control Expansion and Renovation of Central Office Complex for just calls.
I need a motion in the Senate, accept. Or reject, or decide to reject. I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by Ms. Louie here. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven five R S, a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Groverage for the Innes D Dry Drainage Project within the city of Groverage.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Melison, second by Ms. Allen. Call for the vote. Ms. Northese.
Summary number zero seven six R S, a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Groverage for the Bellater, Bellater Subdivision Tree Removal Project within the city of Groverage.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Melison, second by the chair. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven seven R S, a resolution appointing Yvette Morris to serve as a member of the Greater St. Martinville Economic Development District.
I need a motion in the Senate. I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by Ms. Northese. Call for the vote. Yeah. Ms. Yvette Morris, would you like to come and introduce yourself?
Sure. Yvette Morris, resident of St. Markerville. Um, I'm very active in the community, I'm a mother of one, daughter of seven. Twenty-three grandchildren, very active in their lives as well. I do a lot in the community, uh, citywide, um, I do a lot of canvassing and volunteer work for, uh, elections, as, because I like working with you guys. So I do that on a parish level, a state level, and a city level. I also am a member of the African American Museum Association. Uh, I'm also a New Commerce Club member. I also choose, uh, I'm a member of Excellence Sabron. We work in the community, enjoy activities for the children. And, um, when I started jiving down all that, it was like, wow. So now I get to work with you guys on a parish level, which is a second opportunity because I worked on the reinforcement, uh, committee in doing the reinforcement. So I'm familiar with some of the faces, I know if you remember me, guys, remember me, but I'm here once again with this second opportunity and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, I'm going to get a bit of a scare.
I do, but I love it all.
Just want to thank you for stepping up, I know this is a new endeavor and we're excited to, um, move the, not just the city, but the parish, uh, with economic development. So thank you then for stepping up to the podium.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Northese.
And just to add, with that, um, district being created by, uh, Lacy, we really, really appreciated that from our representatives and being allowed to appoint someone in that position and, um, I would say this without even backing down, she's like the perfect person to fill that position, especially for economic development, I've worked hand in hand with her, she is a big motivator to me and, you know, for a long time she never wanted to come, not to the front, but just to do what I know and I've seen her do. So for us and then for me to have her on the parish level and working in that district with that creation and I wish she was gonna meet a lot of people, especially someone like Lacy and Jenny and all that, we can definitely, we have some eyes on her now. So, I do thank you for accepting that appointment and on the fall to work with you. More, I want to say.
Summary number zero seven eight R S, a resolution reappointing Pete Babino to serve as a member of St. Martin Parish Water Protection District Service Room.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Corrie, second by Ms. Melison. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero seven nine R S, a resolution reappointing Luke Johnson, Kevin Looney, and Judge Louis Pittman Jr. to serve as members of the sixteen judicial district children and youth planning board.
Uh, Ms. Jean-Baptiste, you have something you want to share?
Yeah, um, if you all remember, these three individuals, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Babino, was appointed, um, with completing, um, a term and so we were trying to get the board reactive, so they only served for a short period of time and speaking with them, they're interested in continuing to keep this board active and provide these services for our children they use, um, in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Melison, you want to make a resolution? I have a motion by Ms. Melison, second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero eight zero R S, a resolution reappointing Nora Thibodeau to serve as a member of the St. Martin Parish Tourism Commission.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Melison, second by Ms. Clay. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero eight one R S, a resolution reappointing Jimmy Daly to serve as a member on St. Martin Parish Water and Stormy Commission Number One Stevensville Del River.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Louie here, second by Ms. Melison. Call for the vote. We have two extension, extension letters this week, I need a motion in the Senate, the extended, then for resolution summary number zero eight two slash R S and zero eight three slash R S. I have a motion by Ms. Clay, second by Ms. Louie here. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero eight two R S, a resolution appointing Greg Domine to serve as a member of the St. Martin Parish Tourism Commission.
Is the Domine present? Would you like to come and introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, Greg Domine, I'm the owner and operator of Ocean Army Park. Uh, I bought the park in twenty nineteen and when I purchased the park, we videoed became members of the Louisiana Association of Army Parks and Campgrounds. Uh, uh, that, that was probably one of the best things we could have ever done. Uh, they voted me to the Board of Directors within two years of that and then I was actually voted to the presidency of the board, uh, for, for Larveck, uh, back in twenty twenty-one. Uh, I've been on the board for that for two years and then the Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser appointed me to the Louisiana, Louisiana, uh, I can't think of the word, I'm nervous, I don't talk much, uh, the Louisiana Development Tourism, uh, Commission. I've been a part of that for over a year and a half. Uh, I, I, I work with the state as much as we possibly can. We actually travel the United States when it comes to the campgrounds and Army Park, uh, industry and what I'm trying to bring to, to the tourism development, uh, the tourism commission here that's in the, the parish is what we, what we're seeing throughout the state and throughout the United States.
Thank you for accepting this position and volunteering the citizens' work. Do you think it's an honor to serve with Billy Nungesser, which I'm sure he is?
Absolutely.
We can even serve him as a least of the utmost. Definitely it would be an honor, if he decided to stay on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question.
Ms. Allen, do you have a question?
Yes. Just a little bit, what's the name of the book?
Oh, Ocean, yes.
Oh, Ocean?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's the one that Floyd used to sell?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's a good spot there.
I do that.
I didn't go, I always wanted to go to Florida for it.
I didn't buy it from Florida, I actually bought it from a lady out there, about a quarter hour, and they had bought it from Florida. About six years prior to, to repurchasing it and then I purchased it six years, about six years ago.
I'm gonna go get some good fish then though.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you. You stop making this monster, we are, we are. I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Melison, second by Ms. Clay. Call for the vote.
Summary number zero eight three R S, a resolution awarding contract for the Foxcar Road roadside stabilization and road repairs project for the apparent low bidder Diver Solutions LLC in the amount of one million six hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars.
Ms. Delcum, you wish to discuss?
Diversity, diversity, uh, came in with a little bid and, uh, we're in the process of putting the project together. Uh, it'll probably be a couple of months, two, three months to get material and to get everything, uh, stationed and mobilized to, to do the project. Uh, we've already gotten in touch with the electrical, uh, conduit that goes across the pipe to get that removed to do the project. We've already, uh, found and have located, uh, staging area for the project. So this is a much needed project. If you remember a year ago, uh, with the, uh, embankment going into the Vermillion, uh, the embankment has gone all the way up to the road and the road is now being taken out. So that being said, this thing needs to be done as soon as possible to, uh, to retard any additional, uh, uh, movement into the Vermillion and, and kind of stabilize. There are eight houses that are down there, residents of St. Martin Parish that are very, very concerned about the current condition and I'm sure they're going to be pleased to know that, uh, we're in the process of taking care of it. Thank you.
I need a motion in the Senate, I have a motion by Ms. Allen, second. Second by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Ordinance introduced for publication. Summary number one five one three O R, and ordinance to amend the revised chapter thirty-six Solid Waste Management Article One, Section Thirty-six dash nine littering to provide a discharge or deposit of grass clippings and lawn debris onto public sidewalks, streets, drainage, or any other public area within the parish of St. Martin and to provide for penalties along with all matters associated therewith. Summary number one five one four O R, and ordinance amending chapter nineteen, St. Martin Parish zoning ordinance, Appendix E, parish short zoning data sheets and the code ordinances for the St. Martin Parish Government by amending the zoning classification district on a portion of a road so that the original ordinance adopted in December eighteen, nineteen ninety-five, parcel ID zero five one zero two B three five five five, and through Star High Level. Summary number one five one five O R, and ordinance providing for amendment to the year twenty twenty-five operating maintenance budget. Summary number one five one six O R, and ordinance providing for amendment to the expenditures of the year twenty twenty-five operating and maintenance budget for the Health Unit Maintenance Fund, Fund Number Two Fifty-One. Summary number one five one seven O R, and ordinance to authorize St. Martin Parish Government to sell by public disposition all its interest in that certain type of land situated in the parish of St. Martin, Louisiana, located at thirty-six forty E Main Highway, Groverage, Louisiana, seven oh five one seven, and further described in entry number three five three two three seven in the official reference of St. Martin Parish Purple Court that was adjudicated St. Martin Parish Government by tax fee, all in accordance with Louisiana Revised Catching Forty-seven twenty-two oh one et cetera.
Information wise, no, requiring council action?
Anybody want to announce it? As president?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I was presented during the end of last week as to questions raised as to information that the council would need to make decisions on projects, et cetera, et cetera. Financial things that may have been brought up or not brought up. I would just want to put out that any, any numbers or anything that you need to know budgetary-wise, always open to all council members and participants. I would ask for myself, or I would ask for Mr. Shawn readily available. Information has never been denied or not given if anybody asked for it. In regards to that, there was a decline of a project tonight, and it was brought up that necessary information was not given to be able to make a determination of project. And I just wanted to, I went through these things just briefly and gave you to where y'all had these numbers, and some of you... That being said, sales tax number one, in addition to the roads that we will be doing this year, and has been budgeted and basically paid for, we have, we have an additional one point seven seven eight dollars in the sales tax number one road construction. In the general fund, if you remember correctly, the tax assessor reassessed real estate values after we had done the budget. And because of that, the tax increase that will be generated due to that fact, you know, we came up with another, just from an adjustment of that, two point five million dollars between the general fund and what had been anticipated with the video poker. Drainage bond was also brought up as to a need for additional monies. We presently have almost one point eight million dollars remaining in the drainage bond. So all of these monies, you know, so when we're doing these projects and looking at possible change orders or possible extensions of revenues needed to be able to take care of these projects, just want to bring to your attention that these monies are available, and therefore, in the event that you are not made aware of it or so forth, to be able to make a conscious and qualified decision on this, just want to make sure that information is always available, either through myself or Mr. Shawn.
Mr. Norrisis?
I just have a question. I'm not trying to put Ms. Lacy on the spot, but I mean, I see her, and we all here, and I just have a question. I'm just, you know, came to my mind, April Guard stood a roundabout. But we have going on, we all, it's tourism. Didn't we do a plan or to... I mean, it's... No?
It's, it's complete, they're all round about to complete.
No, the design. We didn't do that?
And which one, like...
The one here. The one you said, Warren Bumsaw.
No, I know, but we reduced the... So we just had the name.
And that is, okay. No, I mean, we're not, we're not submitting more, okay, cool.
Yeah, no, I think the original plan, it was probably pretty cool. Because they have this, this project that started for them in the tourism. So the original plan, which was, it was pretty, I mean, it was nice. It was, you know, a brick, a kitchen wall, it was, it was beautiful. And then, of course, we got bigs back in, and what we had big, what we had budgeted for, for all four roundabouts was what one was gonna cost us. So we had to scale it down. So what you see is now, that's it.
That's what, no, I had that pretty picture still in my brain, I never thought, hey.
It's still pretty.
No, it's pretty, but you know.
It's definitely better than what it was before. But yeah, that's the real.
Good, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Jean-Baptiste?
I just want to add, I would like to work with you to see if I maybe getting some lights at that particular roundabout, especially with a lot of accidents. And for the surprise, this house has been a bouncing board for a lot of tourists. They missed the roundabout in May, in one of the spays, in the shore, the whole, the whole bunch. So we're gonna get with you to try to see if I can work on some grants and fund dates, put some, some light in that area.
It's gotta be a state. Um, it's, it's, it's a combination, but I think if we get the ball rolling, we might have to push that way, and we got economic development. New person is, more, we could jump on that, to try to help out with that.
And also, they could be putting in capital, which was...
Yes.
Very.
So.
Thank you. Any other questions for anyone else? If I hear none, I need a motion in a second to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste. Call for a vote. Be adjourned.